I'd like to call to order the Merrimack School District, SAU 26 School Board Meeting, January 19, 2023, Merrimack Town Hall Memorial Room. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. I want to start with our first agenda item, which is public participation. If you would like to come, please come to the mic, state your name and address. And if you're a student, you never have to state your address, so we're going to open it up to public participation.
Hi, good evening. My name's Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I was unable to attend the meeting that was held this Tuesday on the 17th since my daughter had ski program. We finally had some snow to ski on. But I did have a chance to re-watch the recording of the meeting and was surprised with one of the comments made regarding the Second Step Program by Castle, our SEL program. It was also stated how important SEL curriculum is within our schools and the importance of harmony within Merrimack. First, I wholeheartedly agree that SEL is a vital piece of our students' education. And I also share the desire for community synergy here in Merrimack. However, unfortunately, the words used seem to be in direct contrast with that goal that I believe everyone in this room has for harmony. Unfortunately, in our society, words have been weaponized and their meanings have been used to sow division and to be divisive to communities. And words matter. The words that our elected officials use when conducting official, public, business matter and carry additional weight. I fully support all board members supporting and being able to voice their concerns about any program in our curriculum. However, the terms that are used can unintentionally undermine the years of work that Fernside and others have been doing to help our students. There's already some hesitancy, unfortunately, around SEL, what that entails and the benefits for our students. And unfortunately, I'm afraid that that could initially create more skepticism for families here at Merrimack. It's my sincere hope that this does not instigate any issues or battles around our families similar to those we saw during the masking debates in COVID during the pandemic. But I would just like to ask that everyone be really mindful of words that we all use when we're choosing in these meetings because of the repercussions that can unintentionally happen within our community. Unfortunately, right now, many of our students are struggling. Many of our students are in crisis. We've heard it from the high school. We've heard the behavioral increases that we've seen with students' dysregulation. And it's not unique to Merrimack, but it is something that we need to address together if we hope to make up for the academic gaps that have been left by the pandemic. Failure to do so would be failing our children. You all have my appreciation for the important role that you play within our community, supporting our schools. Thank you for the time and effort that you spend to ensure all Merrimack students are able to receive the best education possible and that they are emotionally supported to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we have one more public comment, let me and also share with them the feedback we're getting out here. We rarely don't have that kind of feedback, so. All right. Well, we will move on to new business, and I want to welcome the Honorable State Representative Rosemary Rung to share her discussion on state budgeting and future funding.
Yeah, go ahead, Rosemary. So I just wanted to, before we go any further today, we lost a Merrimack school teacher who passed away. And I'd just like us to have a moment of silence in honor of Sean Crowdo. I had the honor of working with him for many years before he went to the elementary school. And he was a wonderful teacher, and we're all saddened to hear this news. So if we could just take a moment. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much for inviting me to explain how sausage is made in Concord, because that's really what state funding is like. Just for the record, my name is Rosemary Rung. I'm a state representative for Merrimack, but it's known at the legislature as Hillsborough 12 or District 12. As you all know, the state has a constitutional responsibility to provide an adequate education for its children. And the way the state defines that is in terms of money. So I want to explain to you how that money gets calculated and how that, what that means for Merrimack. So adequacy is defined on a per pupil basis. So what happens is there's, the state and the legislature just defines how much does an adequate education cost? And there's a figure called base adequacy, which is, I can give you the exact number, it's $3,786 per pupil. So the state says, okay, if you have 1,000 pupils, that means we're going to give you 1,000 times 3786, and that's your base adequacy. Now, there are four things that get added on to that. One is how many students do you have in the free and reduced lunch program? And that number is multiplied by $2,037. And that's added on to whatever the product is from the base adequacy. Then there's another category, special education. So students that are in special education, that number is multiplied by, oh, you know, I did free and reduced lunch, that was 1893, special education's 2037. And then students that English is not their primary language, that number is multiplied by 740. And then there's a kind of a new add-on, and those are students who are third graders who score less than proficient on reading. And that number is multiplied, also multiplied by $740. So when you add up the base adequacy, the costs for children in free and reduced lunch program are eligible, those that are in special education, those that are non-English primary speakers, and then those third graders. And it's also third graders who don't fall into those other three categories. That is called the total cost of an adequate education. That is what the state's responsibility is to provide to local school districts. Now, there are two buckets that the state uses to provide funding for that, two primary buckets. One is called the adequacy grant, and that comes out of the state Education Trust Fund. And it's money that's set aside from just a lot of revenue sources that the state collects. Could be business profits tax, business enterprise tax, room and meals tax. That goes into a pool of money. The legislature defines how much of that is going to go for education. The other bucket is called SWEPT, and that stands for statewide education property tax. And that is a number that the state, the state determines how much money do we want to raise to support education beyond that adequacy grant? And they take that money and they divide it by the total value of property in New Hampshire to get a tax rate. And they apply that tax rate to every community in the state. So it's very similar to what Merrimack does. We determine how much money we have to raise for either the town budget or the school budget. And we divide that by the total value of property that Merrimack can assess. And that gives us our tax rate. But this, so the state tax rate really doesn't have anything to do with the calculation of the Merrimack tax rate. It's something that's totally the state determines, and they assess it. And so that's called SWEPT money. Now, there's been changes in SWEPT when the, this current biennial budget was passed in 2021. At that time, the state had said, we need to raise 300, I wrote it down, $363 million. And that's what they raised. They divided that by the total property of the state, and the town of Merrimack collects whatever money is, you know, is collected from that property tax rate. But in 2021, the state lowered that to $263 million. So what that did is then it dropped the tax rate. Because now they're collecting $100 million less than they did previously. So it was what's called a tax cut. But when you hear that tax cut in SWEPT, what you really need to recognize is that it's a revenue cut. Because when we collect that money that's collected by the town of Merrimack on behalf of the state of New Hampshire, the SWEPT money, it doesn't go to the state, even though it's a state tax. It gets collected by the town of Merrimack, but it goes right to the school district. It's a tax collected by the state, but it's a revenue by, for the town, for the school district. So with this drop in the SWEPT from 2021, Merrimack is going to see $2 million less in the SWEPT revenue. So just by that drop in the collection, that's the revenue drop. It's kind of scary to see that kind of revenue cut. But what the state has done is they've increased their adequacy grant to make up for it. So it's like a shell game where, you know, the money that you need under the SWEPT may be less, but it goes into another, it's a shell. So for instance, if Merrimack was getting 2 million in SWEPT and 2 million in adequacy, if we see SWEPT cut down to 1 million, then we'd have 3 million in adequacy. And the real driver was that, is the state had a lot of revenue. They had gotten revenue from ARPA funds, which enabled them not to spend money that they normally may have budgeted from state revenue. And so the, so they had this excess state revenue, and they said, we can cover this tax cut. So we can cut the SWEPT, and we'll just make up for it through that Education Trust Fund. I hope nobody's eyes are glazing over. Is this, you got me okay?
I find this exceedingly fascinating, because I've been dealing with this for like 30 years.
Yeah.
So yeah, so the state cut the, the adequacy education grant, all in all, for FY '22, it's like $15 million. So you got two pools of money. One of it is the grant, which comes from outside of Merrimack. And the other is the statewide education property tax, which is Merrimack money coming out of your own pocket.
Right.
Because it's the fourth line on the tax bill.
Exactly. So what will happen is when you go to the taxpayers for money that has to be raised through property tax, it's, like, you're doing your budget. And you do your whole budget, but part of your budget is going to be revenue sources. And it's not all from local property tax. Some of your revenue sources may come from the federal government. There could be just miscellaneous funds. And then, you know, you've got the SWEPT funds. But it's, what you're going to the local taxpayers for is going to be about the same, even though there's a SWEPT cut, because you could have a higher revenue line on that adequacy grant number. I hope, so it should be, now, I've been in communication with the Education Funding Director of the state. He does foresee a cut in state funds anyway, a net cut. But I think that must have to do with some enrollment decreases or decreases in like free and reduced lunch, or SPAD, or English as a Second Language. But I do want to thank Mr. Olson, because one of the things I've been harping on for years is the school district to be more proactive in getting free and reduced lunch applications, because that has a huge impact on the revenue that we get. And I think many families just don't see it as a priority to send that form in. Maybe they think they're not going to qualify when they do. But the more we can do to urge families, even if they have to return it blank, but expect every family to return a form, that's a big help. The other thing that I've been trying to do at the state is work with my colleagues on the Finance Committee. Because, you know, many times, the state is defining adequacy like that, but you can tell it's inadequate. Because, I mean, even if it's 4,000 per pupil, you have 20 pupils in a class. That doesn't even cover one teacher, let alone pay for the heat, the lights, administration, things like that. So how we define education at the state really needs a look. But it's a very politically charged topic, because it involves taxation and just a lot of, and I'm sure I don't have to tell you about the politicization of education. But I do, I am working with the Finance Committee members to look at innovative ways that we can address the needs of local districts beyond the constraints of this formula. And, you know, one thing that I do want to mention is, you know, in New Hampshire, it's very, very difficult for us because we're so dependent on property tax. And what that does is we have such disparity in the state, because we have communities that are very, very wealthy, and they don't have many kids. Look at Waterville Valley, very expensive property, but not many children. So they have a very low tax rate, and they can spend a lot more per pupil than we could. So communities that are of moderate or average property values, and I would put Merrimack probably in that. We're probably average, maybe a little above average, but we have a lot of kids. We shouldn't be punished because we attract families into our community. And we should never, ever penalize a community for wanting to provide a good education for their kids. But under the certain, under the current circumstances where we do have such a dependence on property tax, it really is imperative for us to make sure that we bring forth a budget and spending that's very balanced. And I'll give you, I'm a perfect example. My husband and I don't have children in the public school anymore. If our property taxes get too high, we can move. We would be incentivized to move. And we would move to a lower, you know, income tax, property tax community. And who's going to move into our house? It's going to be a family, okay, four, two bedroom, four bedroom. It's going to be a family. And so there's going to be a greater burden on the school district, which is going to drive out more people. And you get into this death spiral where we lose the balance between those property taxpayers who require services and those that don't. That's why if you look at communities that have very healthy school districts, they, but they're family-type communities, is they have a good balance between commercial industrial, which requires few services, and families. But even among that residential tax base, they have a diversity. They can attract single people, retired people, childless people to families. And so that's what I really implore you to do, is to ensure that we can maintain that balance and we don't drive out people because of the cost of our schools. There is, there is a fine line, but we can hold it. And I know what you're going through. I was on the school board for a long time, and I, and while I have this bully pulpit, I'll, I just want to say, I know there's going to be a teacher's contract on the ballot. And I have lived through times when we didn't have a teacher's contract, and it is the worst circumstance you can imagine. Teachers are demoralized. Their passion wanes, and it affects our kids and affects them. And when you look at our budget, most of it goes to our people. And we, that's where our value is of a school district, is our teachers, our staff. And we have to do everything we can to get that teacher's contract passed. And if it means really holding the line on the budget, we have to do that. We cannot bring to the voters such a burden, a financial burden, that they reject everything, because that's what's happened in Merrimack before. Years when we've had a teacher's contract, we tried to hold the line on other warrant articles. And then those years we don't have a teacher's contract gives us a little more breathing room. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I hope I didn't go beyond my time.
I have a question. So you talked about state aid. We have a situation where when Nashua has not enough places for homeless families, they will come to the hotel in Merrimack, and then we have, you know, for a period of time, these students that we are educating that need a lot of services. Have they thought about giving more state aids to communities that are taking on the burden for homeless families to give them the educational support that they need?
Thank you for the question. I think that definitely is an area that we need to make sure is addressed. There is a component, I didn't want to get into it, but we've got the SWIFT, we have the adequacy grant. But there is another bucket called Relief Aid Fund. And that does go to communities that do have a high, higher population of students on free and reduced lunch. And I think it has to meet a certain percentage.
Yeah, 17%. If you get, if you have less than 17%, you don't get anything. Merrimack didn't get anything. If you have more than 17%, it's a X amount per pupil, then it's going to graduate.
But that's something I would, I will bring to the House Finance about those, because it, you know, having that 17, that's an arbitrary number. You know, at least it should be on a sliding scale. But it just reinforces how important it is to get those free and reduced lunch applications in.
Along with that, I'm wondering if, you know, having worked with those families in transition, sometimes they don't want to fill out those forms because they're trying to stay under the radar. Because they don't want, they don't want some other services involved in their life and privacy, really. And so I'm wondering if there's, and again, you would know this better than I would, something, a fund that the state could provide for districts to request reimbursement for families in transition or something along those lines that moves it out of the free and reduced lunch calculation. I don't know if that's even possible, just throwing it out as a brainstorm.
No, I think that's a good point, and I'll definitely bring this back to the House Finance. And also, anytime there is some, you know, some way or an opportunity where I can represent the school board to Concord, please just ask me, that's my job. But I also want to ask the question, because I think there may be some confidentiality around free and reduced lunch, that that information is not shared beyond the Department of Education.
Oh, I agree. I'm talking about it from the perspective of the family. They don't feel that there would, that there would be confidentiality, or they're unsure, and so they would not fill it out.
Well, they might not even want the teacher to see it.
Yeah.
You know, or expect that the teacher might see it somehow.
The way we have it set up, every kid is in power school, and if they're free and reduced, they're flagged. So kids can go through the line, swipe their ID card, or however they would do it. And you wouldn't know if they have money on their account, or it was free or it was reduced. No one would know. Not even the food service personnel at the registered point-of-sale terminal taking in the funds if they have money on their account. If free and reduced, they're going to have money on their account. So everything is highly confidential. I remember back in the days where they used to have a paper list on the side of a cash register, not in this district, okay? But yeah, the confidentiality is a huge thing. And so people in food service don't know, with the exception of the director of food service.
But I think Lori's point is also interesting, and maybe what we need to do in, you know, 2023 is have we, the state, at the state level, have a conversation about how that relief aid fund is dispersed and what are the qualifications? Because maybe in 1975, free and reduced lunch was the best way to do it. But maybe in 2023, it needs to include things like families in transition or other things that could create a burden on the school district that isn't exclusively tied to free and reduced lunch.
If I could chime in a little bit, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't mind.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was SB 420 that put in that extraordinary aid grant based upon the free and reduced. And, you know, that's something that, when you, if you're, if you're 17% or under, you get, you get nothing. So it'd be nice to, you know, have something where it was more like you suggested, Rosemary, a graduated scale, where we could at least get something. And those people in transition, we're going to pick them up only on our ADM, Average Daily Membership, but that's not going to come until like the following year. So that's why it is a little bit tricky. And we do have a little bit of money in the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act. So if we have homeless people come in here or people who are in transition, but it's not a lot, you know? There's far more of a need than what is covered with our current funding situation.
Yeah, and politically speaking, moving away from free and reduced lunch would take a while because it's used for so many other metrics in the state. I think probably the most immediate and effective way of addressing immediate needs is really to do education with families and maybe finding a certain process where filling out the form wouldn't have to go to the teacher or there's some way, it just goes into an envelope, dropped off at central office or something. But I think if families are educated to at least fill it out, even if they don't think they qualify and get it in, reducing the stigma, letting people know you're really helping the district out. Because it does, it does have a big impact. I was surprised how much more money some districts get that you wouldn't think, that you think they're a wealthy district. But it's because they're very successful in getting, capturing every child that's eligible for free and reduced lunch.
Well, if they, if we can better help taxpayers understand that it actually may impact their tax bottom line, that may be our best way to encourage people to fill it out.
Yeah.
Rosemary, could I just pick up, first of all, thank you for all the information. One of the things that we used to study in Massachusetts was the impact on municipal services budget and school budgets from residential versus commercial tax-based components, which is what you alluded to. And a lot of the research has shown that for every dollar contributed by a residential unit, there is about a dollar 20 to a dollar 25 in cost that is created, whereas opposed, whereas if we're talking about the commercial component of the tax base, for every dollar that's contributed in that, in that component, there's only about 80 cents worth of services, municipal or school services that are required. So, you know, there's the overall importance of communities planning carefully. Yes, everyone wants a beautiful, bucolic town, but there is an importance to a, a commercial component to funding municipal and school services.
Oh, absolutely. I remember back in the day, I was on the school board when the town was considering purchasing Horse Hill Nature Preserve, because there was supposed to be like a 424 housing development going in there. And I was working with Pete Gagnon at the time, who was on the planning board, about multipliers. And the multiplier is how many students you would expect from a single-family unit. And I think back then it was like over two. That's dropped in Merrimack, so that's, that's good news for us. But even communities that have current use, where they have a lot of open space that's protected, they are at a reduced property tax. It's a very, very low property tax. So it really is hard finding that sweet spot where you have enough commercial industrial to offset the burden on residential. But you also have that diversity of residential. So if you have, if you have a community or neighborhood that is more attractive to, you know, childless families or childless individuals, you know, that brings that balance. So it kind of spreads out the cost burden that you might see from family residential. And it is too bad. I mean, it would be nice that every family would be welcomed in a community, but it's really tough. Especially a big discussion we're having in Concord now is on affordable housing and trying to get towns to embrace and promote zoning regulations for, to establish affordable housing. And it's really difficult, because all they see is there's going to be more kids coming in. And it's sad that we should be welcoming families and children and not see them as a liability to the community. But I'd love to be able to have, you know, once you get through the budget season, if you want to have regular updates, I'd be happy to do that. if you want to have regular updates, I'd be happy to do that to let you know what's going on in Concord. And also to get your feedback on what kind of issues are important and things where you would like to recommend a position be taken. And I'm sure the other reps would be eager to do that, too.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again, Rosemary. It's been a long time.
All right, we're going to move on to our work session and budget adjustments.
So as we move forward, our purpose of our school district budget is very straightforward. It's to create and implement a financial plan, which we will support appropriate funding for all programs benefiting all students while balancing the Merrimack community's ability to pay our taxes. It's a tough balancing act for all of us. Creating a school budget is the most daunting, labor-intensive task of the school business office, which is Matt and our school district leadership. And it's, it's a hard job. But the budget just is not about financial planning or expense tracking. It's also about the school board's commitment to our town for delivering services, educational programs, and results. We had a huge, great success with our goals meeting this summer and we set some really solid goals on school safety, the teacher's contract, literacy for all students, our SEL program supporting all learners. And we heard this fall from our assistant superintendent, very confident and wonderful, that our test scores in the town of Merrimack are below state average in many places. So I believe the board is on, and the schools and the administration are on the path to doing great things. We've identified many places where we need to put more resources. It's not about, all about money, but it is about making sure we are aligning our resources and that we can really get the results. I mean, we're committed to a three- to five-year plan where our school district is going to be one of the best in the state. I think that's where we're going. And so I just, you know, I talked a lot about in this budget about, you know, how are we going to get there? And it's been devastating to hear that we are going to have cuts or, you know, what those cuts look like and how we're going to move forward. So I look forward to the deep discussion tonight. I know the board has put in a lot of hours preparing and talking about this budget. It's been very stressful for all of us. But I, I really do appreciate all the feedback and transparency from administration and all the work of the board.
With that, I will open it up to motions for changes to the budget. Well, I will go first. I would like to make a motion to reduce online item 100460062845108, repair on the maintenance budget and remove the girls' softball dugout for fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars with the goal of seeing that back in the budget next year. Is there a second?
I will second it for the point of discussion.
In the maintenance budget. Page seven.
It's after the high school. So I can speak first on my thoughts. So I've been really about Title IX, fifty years. And so I'm going to say that I think that we should support this cause.
So I do support it, but we have a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar debt payment left this year on the middle school that we will not have next year. So it makes it easier to do that dugout next year with less impact on the budget.
Yeah, I think I have to agree too, especially when the bond for the middle school is gone next year. And I don't like saying that because I think they deserve the proper facilities in order to do what they need to do. But I think in the case that we're in, I think that makes the most sense.
Any other comments?
Just a comment. I would, I would be supportive of that because we came into this budget process with a series of, of goal development processes. And as you said, Lori, we very importantly identified the need for curriculum revision and updates. Very importantly identified intervention services and reading at the K to four level, which I think are absolutely crucial. We want a graduation pathways program because a comprehensive high school is not for all students. And we want to focus on maintaining reasonable class size, which research over the many years has shown is extraordinarily important to academic achievement. So we all understand that budget's about priorities and establishing those priorities and sometimes making sacrifices. And I think certainly this is something that we ultimately need. We all understand that. But given the nature of our needs that are academic in nature, we'd be supportive of that certainly.
Yeah, if I could chime in for that. This is, this is something that Tom Tussaud and I, who have worked together for a very long time, never really kind of crossed our minds. And Tom, it really kind of crossed his mind that this is something that needed to be done at some point in time. So the purpose of incorporating it into the budget is to kind of foreshadow it, let's say, right? To give you guys some visibility on it. So if you wanted to wait until next year, at least it wouldn't be the first time you've heard about it from us. And it wouldn't be kind of like a pop-up surprise, kind of like it was this year. So with the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars going bye-bye next year, which is awesome, finally paying off that middle school, it seems inappropriate place. We do have some other suggestions if you want to hear them, but we'll let you, we'll wait for your cue.
Well, we will, I'll call the question on this motion. So all those in favor of eliminating the girls' softball dugout line, say aye? All those opposed? Passes three to zero. With that, I am going to turn it over to hear your suggestions.
Do you want me to start, Bill? Sure. Well, we're, we're not new to pulling together, putting together cut lists. So we anticipated that this day was going to happen. Remember years ago, I don't know if Rosemary was on the board back then, but we had to do like a five million dollar cut. I guess it was an exercise in how much pain and anguish everybody would see with a five million dollar loss in the budget. However unrealistic it was, we went through the exercise. But first, first on our list is every year, we have a turnover rate of around thirty-five to forty people. And a lot of times, those people who come in that take the place of a person that's making sixty-five thousand, seventy thousand a year are usually around maybe fifty thousand or forty thousand or something like that. So we historically have around a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand reduction in salaries due to rehires for those that have left us. Either they're retiring or they're going to another district, but they're usually higher up on the scale. So we would offer that, and it's been consistent throughout the years. We would offer two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars from various salary lines across the board that we could take right off the bottom line because there is due to rehires. That's the first one. I do have some other ones. If you're interested in hearing, have a conversation with Jason Pelletier, our awesome technology director, about how we could carve down the, the million-dollar request without hurting us. So I can give you those at some point in time. But if you want to kind of take a look at the, my, my first kind of opening, you know, thing, you could do that first.
So do I have a motion to accept that two hundred and thirty-nine thousand reduction in salaries?
Can I just say, comment on that? So Matt, because we've worked so hard to get our teachers to stay in the district, you're probably not going to have that for long.
Probably not going to have it for long. That's correct. So this may, this may be a one and done, but it's, it's there.
Because hopefully this contract's going to pass and we're going to move up the ladder.
Right.
And no one's going to be going to another school district because they're going to make ten thousand dollars more.
That is the goal.
That is the goal, but we still have retirements.
You have, you have at least seven retirements. You have an early retirement incentive. You can go, I've seen some boards go up to ten when they had the money to do so, depending upon the circumstance and the person involved. So this is a safe bet that I've seen historically. It's around two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in personnel savings.
Do I have a motion? Would we like to hear his other options before we make a motion? Okay.
Okay. In looking at the technology infrastructure improvement, you know, that, that line came in at one million, thirty-six thousand dollars and some change from around three hundred and, three hundred thousand dollars last year. So it was a pretty big increase. And that was due to, you know, Jason doing a complete inventory of all our gear, which we've had in the past, but this was, you know, a refresh of that. And so he knew exactly how old everything was when it was purchased, what serial number, what color it was, you know, where it was and which closet. So it was an awesome endeavor and I believe it was part of the school board objectives that we had when we sat down to do a complete inventory of all our technology and our infrastructure. And so in talking with him, we could remove twelve thousand dollars without, we wouldn't be replacing all the Cisco phones we need to replace potentially, but we would replace half of them. We could reduce that line by another thirty thousand dollars. He has computers and labs and some small labs that are still viable. And on a replacement cycle, it might be advantageous to do that. But because we're looking for some money, he didn't feel that this was like a deal breaker. The next one is twenty thousand dollars. We wanted to, we could do without two less servers as long as the storage area network for seventy grand maintained, was maintained in that line. Because he was, he could plan on virtualizing two less servers than before. So each server's around ten K. Do virtualize two of them, that'd be a savings of twenty thousand dollars. And then we have some switches. There are fifteen that he had slated, but he could cut that to seven and we'd still be okay. And so that's sixty-three thousand dollars. So those are the ones we have to, to offer up in addition to what you had voted on with the softball dugout.
Can you say the amount of the seven switches instead of the fifteen switches again?
Uh, sixty-three thousand.
And Jason still feels confident that he's going to be able to meet the needs.
Absolutely, absolutely. His first, his first priority is to make sure none of this touches the instructional integrity of our infrastructure in order to bring content to our students and keep our teachers with a positive mental attitude that the tech is going to work when the tech needs to work. That's the top priority because, you know, you heard him here. If it doesn't work once, okay, we'll give you a bye. If it doesn't work three or four times, forget it, I'm going back to paper. That doesn't do us any good. So with these reductions, according to him, he will still be able to do what he needs to do. Kids still will be, be able to be served and the network won't, won't suffer. These are items that would be, you know, in a regular year where we could afford the money. You know, it would be something that, you know, we would be looking at. But without these items, we're still in a good spot. We're a lot better than we were with the path we were taking previously.
Here's my, oh, go ahead.
Oh, just following up. And would we, I would hope in, encourage Jason to keep this in mind for next year? Like maybe when we have a little.
Absolutely. You don't have to encourage Jason for much. He will keep, he will keep this in mind. Yeah.
Well, that was my question because next year we have another amount that's actually quite similar to this year. So are, by cutting it, cutting it this year.
We're not kicking the can down the road.
That's what I'm wondering. Are we just going to make it worse next year? Like make the number for next year way bigger?
We're not going to make it next year. Technology changes so rapidly, it's absolutely ridiculous, you know? It depends. Next year would be what, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next year, the next year's budget's twenty-three, twenty-four, but the budget after that is twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's what he'd be budgeting for. And I'll tell you, in two years, tech can change drastically. We could, we could wipe out maybe all these servers and consolidate closets by running some fiber and everything like that and being a little more smart about what we did based upon the increased efficiency of the technology that comes out. It changes that rapidly. Believe me, I've seen it go from, you know, hundred, hundred, hundred megs to the desktop to what we want to do is we want to do a gig to the desktop right now. So he feels confident that this is good. It's not kicking the can down the road. And there are some, out in the other years, some room for technology changes that'll bring about efficiencies in the way we can do things and configure things that won't make this roll forward.
And here's where the discontinuance of that debt service for the middle school is so strategically important to leverage our financial position for next year.
That's true.
All right, we're going to let you go to the next one. I think we're going to do an à la carte menu here. So we'll take the whole menu and then we'll make motions.
You want, you want the rest of it?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. We have, we went into the furniture replacement account at each school. And it's, you know, it's desks, tables, chairs, some combo desks. There's some cafeteria tables. Let's say at the, the middle school, we'd get two instead of four. And we would cut at J Mews, the calf tables, and we'd get two instead of four. And then the rest of it would be cut in half. So at MES, we'd have a forty-two hundred dollar cut. At Reed's, we would have a forty-two hundred dollar cut. Thornton's, same thing. Muse, I have this written down, so I can give it, I can hand this out if you want to see it. Muse, thirty-six hundred. And then middle school, thirty-two fifty with calf tables. And the same thing in the high school, another fifty-nine hundred. All that stuff totaled up is four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and three dollars.
Say that again?
That includes the softball dugout.
That includes the softball dugout, the softball dugout, the two thirty-nine, the tech, everything, all in. If you want me to pass this out to make life a lot easier for you.
So four hundred and forty-three thousand for everything we've already talked about tonight. Okay.
So I want to make sure we have enough going around.
I have a comment. Well, first of all, I think it's, it's just a lot of collaboration to have the school district who created a budget that they felt very strongly about, but before we had information on some, not some great information about state funding, to come back and work with us to make these cuts. That's, it's, it's an exceptional experience and we really appreciate that, that we, we got these information so we can help us make better decisions too.
The other thing about, about these cuts is that they don't undermine anything in terms of our goals for the district. We still get, we still get the teachers, we still get the curriculum, we still get the devices for the kids that tie into it. We, we still get all of the things that are going to further our goals and improve academic outcomes in Merrimack, which is huge.
And we are absolutely committed to seeing those academic outcomes improve.
And I, and I like, I like that you put on the bottom, sorry, because I'm taking your copy, that the percent variance from this year, the budget year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four is one point four eight percent. Considering the fact that the rate of inflation is what, eight percent? This is an incredibly responsible and aggressive budget. And like you said, it is also, it also represents us attacking some big goals, like really making some progress towards goals. This is super exciting, in my opinion. Like it, it's definitely stressful, wondering exactly how the state funding is going to figure out. But I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of the fact that we were able to find the money to fund these aggressive goals that we have in the area of academics and student achievement improvement and providing for the best possible education for students while not. And providing for the best possible education for students while not, you know, cutting things like extracurricular activities for students that are so critical to mental health and wellness, especially for middle and high school students. Um, would I love to have kept everything? Yes, but a 1.48% is something I feel like I can look a taxpayer in the eye and say, we really did some hard work here and, and, and in, within that budget. Here are the really important things that we're doing that we weren't willing to cut and here's why. But we still were really aggressive in this. I'm happy with that.
You know, and to, and to, um, kind of just a little bit more, you know, um, due to the great leadership of Bill and the tremendous efforts of, of Amy here. This is a budget with these cuts that gets you where you want to be and it's responsible.
You know? And I, I agree with what Jenna said, especially given what Heather Barker shared with us.
Yes.
The increase in the number of students with IEPs and 504s. The definite need for the reading interventionists, which we've been behind since it was, since we first discussed it. Which is a short-term expense for long-term savings. And given that we're still dealing with the fallout of the pandemic. Coming with a 1.48% with, once we implement these cuts is truly fiscally responsible. And we want the teacher contract to pass, which I'm going to talk about when we get to the warrant articles and share the incredible, um, team effort that that was. But we don't want in any way to jeopardize our teachers and the contract. And I think this, this, these cuts, this 1.48% makes that very feasible.
And I think even with these cuts, we're still going to see improvements in these areas. Like it's not like we're decimating these areas that we're taking from. We're still improving them and making enhancements with all of the incredible, um, curriculum developments we've had over the last few months. So I, I also feel a lot better about it.
And we've got curriculum items and items that are like, we're updating and, and buying new curriculum and things. And this year that won't continue to be expenses year over year.
Correct, yeah.
So, you know, the, the furniture replacement and those kinds of items, we have room for in years that we're not buying heavy curriculum. So I, I, I think this board is very much sounds to me in agreement that, that we see the need of all the things we're discussing, potentially cutting. But we can say, we can juggle which year we do them. So with that, I'm gonna, um, offer up, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the cuts as proposed by administration.
I'll second.
You second. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes 500.
Thank you for all the hard work on this.
Here's where I will say it is, um, it's so important to have such a skilled person as Matt in charge of the finances and many other things, uh, in this school district. And he has an absolute credit to this school district and the, and the community. And I couldn't mean that more seriously.
Mel, thank you, Bill, but I'm just the bean counter.
But the best bean counter.
I'm gonna second that just because I must have driven Matt crazy for the last week, all the times I was emailing, I've been texting, I've been trying to get information. Just because, um, you know, of this budget. So I do appreciate all the follow, of everybody. Everyone's been great, so.
All right. So with that, we need to make a motion to accept the new complete budget so that we can pass it on to the budget committee.
I make a motion that we accept our proposed budget for the 22, 2023, 2024 school year as presented tonight.
With a total of 88,329,637.
Yes, Lori, that is what I meant to say. You got it.
Can we just have one discussion before we?
Just need a second.
Okay, so.
I'll second.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Now we can have a discussion.
Um, is, uh, when we went to our goals meeting this summer, we, we talked a lot about, uh, attrition and teachers. And we are, this is an aggressive budget because we're, um, looking to hire seven new positions, which they all, every single position aligns with our goals. There's not one position that doesn't align with the work we did this summer. However, when you look at the overall budget, I think if there's any place when a teacher retires, that there can be attrition. I would hope that we could do that in, in this budget and we trust you, but I just, I just want to say that. Cause I, you know, um, when, when we looked at this, we, we went around and around, we all talked and, 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 uh, we get it. Like, you know, Thornton's Ferry, they have 128 students that, uh, more than the elementary, other two elementary schools. So that's a lot of kids not to have those two teachers. And then we talked about the two new teachers that we need in fifth grade, but 30% of the kids are not reading at grade level. And then we talk about, we really spent so much time talking about literacy and we push for those, you know, reading specialists because we want to make sure all kids are reading at grade level. So there's not one position that we don't agree with, but if there's any way when someone retires that we go, oh, you know what? We can move this teacher over here. That's what I would propose also. That's my final.
And may I say, we will be committed to, uh, pursuing that wherever we can, because that was one of your important goals that you articulated in that June goals meeting is if there is an emerging need or emerging needs that we need to fund, that we make every effort to find savings and reallocate those savings without asking for incremental appropriation.
With that, we will move on to the warrant articles and I'm going to. Oh, we didn't vote, sorry. We haven't voted yet. You're right. All those in favor of accepting this new revised budget, say aye. Board recommendation is 500.
Sorry, I don't always pay attention, but I really was then.
I was thinking about the teacher contract. I'm so excited about it.
Thank you for those cuts that really helped us a lot.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt for the other warrant articles.
The other warrant articles, um, the fir- the first one is, is just, let's, it's, let's start with, well, article one is to elect all those school, school district officers, et cetera, et cetera. That's just there on the warrant. Article two is, um, shall the district, shall the Merrimack School Board be authorized to accept on behalf of the district without further actions by the voters, gifts, legacies and devices of personal or real property, which may become available to the district during the fiscal year. This needs to be voted on only by the school board. We can accept gifts of cash through, well, we've done it before when we have, you know, donations and, and stuff like that. It's like 198 colon 20B. We've adopted that like decades ago. Uh, that we can accept gifts of cash, but gifts of real property. Like, um, years ago, the Rocker property, which is the hill going down towards Buckley's 13 acres. We were gifted that by the family. We were also, I think, sold, it was, let's call it gifted because it only cost us a buck. It was, uh, the town of Merrimack owned an acre of land right at the end of the MHS parking lot. And so they, they gifted us that probably around, I don't know, seven or eight years ago. So we could accept that without going to a vote, deliberative session, the whole deal. So this is something, if somebody wants to give you a legacy of bequeath, personal property, real property, you know, 40 acres someplace and we deem it to be acceptable land with no issues or anything like that. You can accept that without further action by the voters. So that's why this is on. So it just needs a vote of the school board.
So I'll take a motion to accept warrant article number two. Moved by Jenna, second by Ken. All those in favor, 500.
The, the next one is article three. It's, uh, the contract between the, uh, the school board and the Merrimack Teachers Association. Um, right now we're looking at, um, a contract that, uh, in 23, 24 is 1.2 million dollars, 24, 25, 1.27 million dollars and 25, 26, 1.2 million dollars. This represents a 4% raise in year one, 4% raise in year two, and a 3.75% raise in year three. This basically will get us a little bit closer to the area averages of districts around us. So we can remain competitive. Uh, we did this last year. It got us kind of halfway there. This is going to get us another probably 25% or 30% there. It's, it's not going to close the gap totally, but we feel it's going to help us attract and retain teachers throughout their career, which we want to do. And we feel it's going to give us an edge after the third year of this contract with being very competitive on the beginning steps of the contract to get those smart young whippersnappers with master's degrees out of college to come work for us instead of working for someplace else. So I think it was a, it was a hard fought, not, I'm not going to say hard fought battle, you know? It was, uh, it was, it was a long, it was, it was a long, uh, you know, conversation we had with the MTA. They were exceedingly gracious. The, the school board was exceedingly gracious. It was a very good discussion. And, uh, you know, Lori Peters and Lori Roth House, along with Amy, Bill, Melissa Gagne, Melissa Gagne, Melissa Fazlick. I, I still can't get over the, yeah, and whatever. Um, you know, to, uh, come to fruition on this. And we think it's a great contract. And it's something that is going to keep us competitive because you have to maintain competitive competitiveness in this market, so.
And I want to add that last year, the Merrimack voters did an incredible job of giving us the one-year contract, but also fixing our grid. And this contract continues adjustments to that grid. And makes not just the young, the, the younger or newer teachers competitive, but it honors those who stay in the education field. And right now it's tough staying in education. And so I'm really, really excited about how that grid has adjusted even this year. These raises, the MTA, um, was great to work with. And there's, there were just a number of things that we came together very quickly in agreement on. And it was, it was a great conversation on those super important issues on retaining teachers and honoring who they are and what they do.
And I just want to say, um, we, we started this process, I think at the end of September. We just finished this process completely last week. So for the board, this is the first time because we haven't had, um, a chance from when we finished the final language. Um, but I will tell you, uh, it was a great process. It was a long process because we really worked hard to create really good language for both sides and, and make some really, um, positive changes for, um, for teachers and, and, and for all of us. So, um, but it took a long, it took a lot longer than I ever, ever imagined. So I apologize when you heard this tonight for the first time, like, and you pretended that you knew it. That was nice, but thank you.
That, that goes really well into my follow-up question with, so can you tell us about some of the things in it that are awesome or is it, is it?
Well, the big, the big ones are the money items. So, um, this is a pretty significant pay raise, uh, compared to previous years. Also, um, adjusting things like how vacation and, and personal days are used, all of those kinds of things are taken into consideration. Um, the, the stipends, all of those pieces we looked at and took everything into account with inflation. And the difficulty of being in education right now. Uh, we, you will see a full copy of that MTA contract, but they just did their finalization, so. Um, but really the, the, the big things are, are we also, I, and I think Matt said this. We are really helping them with the, with the insurance piece, with 85% on our side for all three years of the contract, which is one of the things they asked for and, um, we were in agreement on. So, uh, but at the same time, as much as we want to be competitive, we also recognize we needed to present a warrant article to the public that would pass. And so I feel like we struck that balance with honoring our teachers, doing what's best for the students, which was the goal of everyone on both sides of the table. But also a warrant article that could, could go before the board, the voters with reason.
What was it? I, I, I meant to look this up today and I completely forgot. What was, what was it like? What was the one that passed last year? What was the amount that was on the ballot? I'm just curious.
I'd have to go back and look.
It was around 1.2 the first year and then the trailer was 950,000.
So the, yeah, the, there was, that 950,000 was a pretty significant grid adjustment in addition to the contract.
Yeah, we voted that in from, you guys voted it in from, uh, from surplus.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember, for some reason I remembered that that one was just under a million dollars.
And I know I was having lots of surplus, but I'm, I was still wringing my hands going, do we really have 950? But we, 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 we covered, so it was good.
We took a lot of heat that we came up with. That's the way we wanted to try to do it, do two warrant articles. But it ended up passing with flying colors and it really got our teachers off the bottom rung, up to the middle, which was that we were never going to be able to do it with a three or 4% raise. It just was never going to happen. So, um, you know, I think the board was very brave and we came out with something and we took some, um, you know, few people were not happy with it. But it, I think when people understood why we did it, it was a good, positive thing.
Well, and as a teacher who talks to other teachers and other districts around the state and some of them will say, you know, we don't even have a teacher's contract. And I say, let me tell you what happened in Merrimack last year. They'll say, gosh, maybe I should think about going to Merrimack. And that is what we're looking for. Because if people are saying my district can't pass their teacher contract, then those teachers start to look, where can they go? And in a, in a community like Merrimack that does these sorts of things that show in meaningful ways that we are for our teachers and we appreciate our teachers and we see the value they bring to our community. It's huge and it's a huge draw. And I'm so grateful to be part of a board and to work with an administration that sees that value and has worked hard to make these contracts, um, adjust to where they need to be.
Yeah, and I, I really think that, you know, teachers are smart consumers, both in purchasing and job hunting. And when you find out that Merrimack has a history of passing teacher contracts over and over and over again. It was probably back in the day before my time that they didn't have one that passed. I'm not sure, probably is correct. But when you have a history of passing contracts and when you're talking to protect prospective candidates and you say, oh yeah, we have a contract, we have this three-year contract. Here, it gives you a sense of stability, that you know where you're going to be and you're going to be able to grow into your position. Are you going to be able to look at, okay, well, I'm going to at least be here for three to four. Well, maybe I've looked at it in the past and see Merrimack has a history of passing labor contracts. That gives me a good warm feeling, right? So it's another selling point for us.
And I, um, again, just so many hours spent on this and I, um, for your sanity's sake, I apologize that it took so long. But I also think it's a really good thing that it took this long because that means both sides are invested in this agreement. Um, and again, I, I think this agreement says to our teachers, we see you, we hear you, we respect you, we appreciate you. Um, and now we have much higher expectations from you. You know, we're throwing a whole bunch of new initiatives and curriculum at them. Um, this is how much we appreciate you implementing them. So now do what we need you to do for our kids. Um, so I, I appreciate that. And I worked in a district where I didn't have a contract for three years. I no longer work in that district.
And I just have one final, um, you know, say, I think, um, that our teachers felt so appreciative that this year there was a, a change and, and people were just more upbeat. But the first year I was on the board, I just can't even tell you how many teachers resigned. It was like this line and that not only cost kids and, but, but even administration trying to go back and hire. And then we're hiring unexperienced people or, um, you know, we're just trying to fill. So sometimes we don't get the best. So it's been a real game changer. And so I, I'm hoping that the community will come back out in full force and, and understand that, um, this was, it was a very stressful negotiation, even though it was really positive. Um, but we came to these terms and we really stand behind them, so.
Well, with that, it's my privilege to make the motion that we accept warrant article number three for the teacher contract as written. Seconded by Lori. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
500. All right, article number four, Matt.
Yes, article number four, we, we usually refer to it as the, the trailer to a labor contract. It's, uh, shall the district, if article three is defeated, which is the, what we just talked about. Um, authorize the school board to call one special meeting and it's option to address the cost items only in the contract. So the board has the option to call a special meeting. Uh, if the board didn't have this article in the warrant, they would have to petition Superior Court. Superior Court doesn't really give you permission to do stuff if it's not an emergency. I have heard in years past that labor contracts don't constitute an emergency. An emergency is, I don't know, a roof blowing off a building or something like that, or maybe your sprinkler system going, you know, heating pipe going at MES.
Too soon, man.
Only kidding, only kidding. Yeah, let's not talk about that. Uh, so this is kind of a boilerplate thing. So this is kind of a boilerplate thing. It allows you the option and you only to the option of going back into negotiations, coming up with a more acceptable number that you think will work with the public. And you'd have to go through the entire deliberative session process and this and budget hearings all over again, so.
Right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Article four as written, even though we're probably not going to need it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
The, the next article is to, can I, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't look at you first. The next article is shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred eight thousand, six hundred sixty nine dollars for purpose of roof replacement at James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Last summer, we did Thornton's Ferry. I think it was one point four million dollars. This year we're looking at one point one million dollars for some roofing at J Muse that the warranty ended in two thousand fourteen, one nineteen ninety six and the other one in two thousand fourteen. When we do a roofing project, we go out to bid on it. We specify a product that has a long warranty, warranties on these roofs that we've been doing, Tom and I for the last, I don't know, ten years or so, have like a forty, forty year warranty to them. So if I stay here another forty years, I may be talking about the same thing, but I don't think that's going to happen, you know? So it's, it's there for your consideration. If you don't go through with it, we'll wind up, you know, maintaining it and patching it, et cetera. But it is due in the capital improvement rotation cycle of roofs.
So I want to say, make two comments. I don't know if you all did your homework and watched the January eleventh budget meeting last year. Thank you, thank you. Then you heard the long discussion we had about why these roof projects are not in the budget and there weren't article. Part of that is for transparency, but I will say after last year's election, there were a lot of people who really appreciated the roof project being separate, not because they were ever going to vote it down, but because it's much more transparent and it's not hidden in the budget. And we're showing this fiduciary and stewardship of our facilities with these roofing projects being on a rotation. And so that's why we felt last year and I think this year as well, it's very good to have this as a warrant article.
And just so, because I did my homework, just so I'm making sure I understand if what I watched from last year makes sense. If this were to not pass, it's done, right?
The warrant article is done as written, yes.
Okay, but I mean, if the warrant article doesn't get voted on, if that, what did I, if they voted down, isn't there, they said no and that's, gotcha.
They said no. We can still do patching and repairs on it, but we can't, we can't grab money from the general fund and arbitrarily do it because there's such a law in the state of New Hampshire called the no means no law.
Right.
So the purpose of replacing the entire roof is null and void, even if you have a twenty million dollar surplus at the end of the year and you want to do it. You can't.
Gotcha.
So can I make a motion?
Make a motion.
With the image of flooded classrooms fresh in my mind, I move that we accept Article five as written.
I'll second.
Seconded by, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero zero.
It's funny you said that because I was remembering last year when I think, I don't remember what it was, if it was the voter guide or something. I saw pictures going around of the leaky, the ceiling tiles at Thornton's Ferry, and I was wondering if there was anything like that going on here.
Yeah, there, there, there is some, there is some leaking. There'll be more by the time we're done. The, the next step after this is gone through the Budget Committee and we get a, the school board has recommended this, so it's going to go forward to the warrant. We're going to start the bidding process on this and we're going to entertain bids. And I remember last year we came in with one point six million dollars. The bids came in a little bit lower, much to our surprise. So at the deliberative session, we cut the amount by two hundred thousand dollars. So this is the amount now, but the amount could change. And the people who put bids in, the bids are contingent upon the warrant article passing. So the roofing companies in this area, we've had one as far as Connecticut bid on these projects. And they're, they're comforted in the fact, knowing that we have a history of passing roof projects and that, you know, they know that if it doesn't pass, the job is just gone. So, and you do it early, you get in the queue early, you wait, you wait until, you know, January to put this thing out to bid or something like that. No one's going to do the work because they, they're already got their book of business filled because this needs to be done in a ever shortening summer that we have, you know, and let's hope for no rain because it's always tight.
Well, J Muse is where we're housing our MES refugees at the moment, so we need to make sure that roof is fine because we can't have all the roofs having a problem.
That is true, and it is where you're housing the J Muse refugees, yeah.
All right, we have one final warrant article. While we have adopted the budget, we still have to vote on the warrant article as it is written.
Yeah, and it's basically, you know, I can read it, shall the district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriation voted separately. So that means nothing in the, that we've talked about is in this number. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, now it's amended to read eighty eight, three twenty nine, six thirty seven. If not, there'll be a default budget that kicks in at eighty seven, one sixty seven, nine forty seven, which is basically last year's, last year's budget with some items that we have by contractual obligations. I have all the detail. It's, it's on my desk right now, but I can tell you kind of from, from memory. It's the increase in, in health insurance that we have. We have an eight percent increase in health insurance. I only really bumped that line up four percent because I don't think it's going to go up eight percent. I think it's going to go up less than that. There's been a recent trend in the health trust coming in high with the GMR and then the actual rates go lower. It's contractual wage increases for the support staff contract, MESA, because they have another year to go on their contract before we go into negotiations with them. It's special ed in order to provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment possible. It's a federal law. So anything that you heard Heather Barker talk about as far as, you know, special ed and out of district placements and tuitions. And now the law is twenty two as opposed to twenty one, that's an impact. So that, that, that is in there. And then the utility increases that we're estimating for next year because per the DOE regulations, we have to provide a clean, healthy, safe environment for kids so we don't get approved as this local school district. So it's real basic stuff that's in that number. And you could see that number is now one point two nine two, one, one million, two hundred ninety two thousand dollars more, no, less than the appropriation we're asking for, so.
So I will entertain a motion. Made by Jenna.
Happy to make a motion that we accept Article eight with the adjusted budget amount being eighty eight million, three hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred thirty seven.
Seconded by Lori, all those in favor, say aye. Five zero zero.
And I just want to put a shout out to a former town counselor, Pete Elbert, who always wanted to make sure the default budget was less than the budget and here we go. So he used to always complain about that and here we are.
Yeah, because for years we had the default budget, you know, much more than the other, so it didn't really give the voters a chance to vote on anything. And last year we had a separation of like two hundred sixty two thousand dollars that the default budget was lower than the requested budget and that passed. So that made me feel good that we could actually pass a budget that was a little bit higher than default. And this is the same, same way, so.
I will say, coming from another state, when I first saw that, the default being more than the budget, I thought, what is that? Because just different states do different things differently and, and yeah, it took me a while to figure out why that was that way. But I'm glad we're the other way around.
You know, they changed the law, you know, if you, if you have a reduction in force, you, you can't, you can't use last year's budget. So you got to take those positions out. So that was kind of the change. Because sometimes we would cut positions and they were still in last year's budget and you would carry forward last year's budget, but you can't do that anymore. So we follow the rules here.
I'm sure we all know this, but I wanted to say it publicly too, is, is I like what you said, Matt, about how we're giving the voters a choice. We're like, we could do the bare minimum that the state requires us to do with this default budget. Or we could do these things that we want to do that are going to improve outcomes for our kids and that all of us around this table need to be advocating for that with voters and making sure that people understand that this is what you're choosing between. You're choosing between the bare minimum required by the state and you're choosing between improving educational outcomes for our kids at honestly, a very low cost.
Can I just say something for a minute? I have to tell you how much we appreciate the approach you've taken and the cooperation that exists between the school board and the administration is we are absolutely marching forward together to improve this school district. And we very much appreciate it.
I feel the same way.
Exactly, we feel exactly the same way. So, all right. Well, our last agenda item is public comments on the agenda items we spoke on tonight, so I want to open the floor to the public. All right, well, I want to thank everyone for their time in these meetings through the budget season. And now it is the Budget Committee's turn, so we will hand that off to them. And for everyone else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I want to say one thing before, just to chuck mower. It's your budget, Chuck.
All right, motion to adjourn, made by Ken, seconded by Lori, all those in favor, say aye. Five zero zero. Thank you and good night.